Welcome everybody for our first livestream version of reviewing proposed regs for CTEC. My name is Judith Blackwell, I'm the new executive director. We have Anthony Zito, who I'm sure many of you are familiar with, as our deputy executive director, and also Gina Ferguson, who's the manager of the development section. We're each going to go through some of the slides. I'm probably going to go through the fewest because these two very talented people did most of the work on these regs, so I want to acknowledge that first off. In terms of process, we're going to present the proposed regs. We'll have a transcriber that is recording the oral and public comments. And we will take questions at the end, but if you have clarifying questions, that is, you don't understand how those things work or something, we will take those while we're presenting them. So first of all, let me say, thank you for coming. I'd like to also thank those online because we need your input. You are the experts in the field, and you're the ones that are helping us to get these things right and to solve these problems. We need your input. Thank you for participating. So that is basically what I have to say before we get started. We're highlighting the proposed changes. All right. We're going to start with page one of our PowerPoint. Section 10317, pretty basic. It just clarifies the eligible basis for multiplier for calculating state tax credits. So that's 10317A. I would be surprised if anybody has any questions on that one. The second one, which is 10317I through K, basically just provides separate parameters for the state tax credit allocations from the original 70 million and the new 500 million, so that you can basically tell which ones pertain to what. So we're going to reduce the minimum point requirements for the 4% plus state tax credit applications. And as you know, currently, they compete under a point scoring system, which is nearly identical to the 9% system, but with fewer credits per project. So that's our proposal there. The next point we have on our PowerPoint is section 10317L, and there we're incorporating the changes from SB 9 regarding certificated state tax credits. So here, we're permitting the state credits, which allow for a higher state credit pricing. We're allowing for you to certify them, and we believe that that will provide more equity for your projects. These changes -- To recoup a collection to certify -- The period of place and service. So up until that, application review of place and service, and it also permits the credits to be resold more than once. So we believe that that's going to give you a lot more flexibility, a little bit more capital. All right. Next slide. So, under 10317G1, we have removed the requirement that 100% units be tax credit units for the 4% projects awarded state tax credits. We're talking now only about the original 70 million. We believe that no other application types are held to this restriction, and so we're proposing to remove it for the 4% for state tax credit applications as well. All right? The next one is section 10326A. All right? We're clarifying the language that relates to the competitive requirements of the original 70 million in state tax credits. So that is really clarifying that only the original 70 million in state tax credits will be used. Okay? Okay. Good. All right. Now -- With regard to the new state tax credit, under section 10305H, you add a language relating to the allocation of the 500 million in state tax credits. And I think that that's basically explanatory, although I do want to make note that there's language in there that says it shall not be subject to condition administered by the -- that basically tracks the language. The next point is that we did remove, we put some clarifying references. Resulting from performance changes in section 10317D3, and basically it permits applications for new construction, 4% plus state tax credits within a qualified tract or difficult development area to request both the 130% basis boost and the state credits. It also adds, this is under the same section, also adds authority to utilize the 130% basis increase with the state tax credits from the new 500 million. So we have to be -- so our detection has -- I'm going to now defer to Anthony for the next.
Well, I think Gina should go first.
Oh, Gina, second next? Okay. Gina.
Thank you. So we'll go now to the next slide, which is service amenities. TCAC is proposing to eliminate two document requirements for the service amenity point category, position descriptions, and the service provider experience chart. Staff experience in reviewing competitive applications is that developers contracting with service providers are choosing experienced and qualified service providers, and so we're proposing to eliminate these additional documents as unnecessary. Next slide, we're going to talk about sustainable building method, and we have a few slides on changes. Those changes are scattered throughout the regulations. So this current slide, we're talking about proposed changes to new construction energy efficiency scoring. These are updating the current options of the percent better than Title 24 to the equivalent energy measurement for the 2019 Building Code Energy Efficiency Standards. That is called the Energy Design Rating, or EDR, and this is effective for buildings committed on or before January, or on or after, sorry, on or after January 1st, 2020. And the changes are meant to be equivalent to the current energy point option. Also, we are proposing changes to the energy scoring for renewable energies offsetting tenant energy loads. Again, those are updating current options to an equivalent under the 2019 building standards. And also for rehab projects, the enterprise green community green building program, we're updating that certification to the current certification reference. Next slide, slide number nine, we're updating the modeling software also for rehabilitation energy efficiency. That's being updated to align with the current module referenced by the California Public Utilities Commission. We are proposing a new change to increase the point value for water efficiency in the energy efficiency scoring. We're enabling this point category to qualify for maximum sustainable building points. Water saving is important. It's an important California housing issue, and projects implementing water efficiency measures should be eligible for maximum points, staff believes. So I also wanted to point out that this change aligns TCAC scoring value for water efficiency with SIDLAC. So they are now both eligible for equivalent points. The next slide, TCAC is also updating references under the compliance and verification section of energy point scoring. So this is basically what I've been saying, the update is for 2019 building standards and modeling software. So these are repeated in the regulation section that addresses verification during the construction, verification done after construction completion. It looks like we might have a question, so I'm going to take a quick pause.
Well, it sounds like we're -- Is it okay, Greg?
We're getting comments that the livestream is not up. So one commenter said it's looping a two-minute video, and another said that it's on our two-minute 19.
Um, apologies.
After the fact. Okay, continue. So now for slide 11, readiness to proceed. This proposed change eliminates the readiness to proceed, not the point category, but the environmental clearance portion of that point category. Typically, the confirmation of NEPA and CEQA. TCAC applicants are required by other agencies to comply with environmental clearances, be it the building department or an agency administering the federal funding. The tax credit program does not impose these requirements, and staff is proposing to leave the documentation verification to those agencies. This change eliminates application requirements and reduces staff time in reviewing applications. There are probably several of you who may have gotten caught up in a NEPA issue, and we feel like at the application stage, it's not something we want to hold a project up over. If NEPA or CEQA isn't finalized by construction closing, that will be an issue for the project, and so there will be a penalty at that point. The project can either receive negative points or a decision on the award. So we're basically just delay the implementation of this until that point, and trusting that applicants will make sure that everything's in order so that is -- The next slide, we're going to talk about some general application requirement changes right now. We're proposing to incorporate the federal requirement for scattered sites into TCAC regulations. The federal requirement is that all units must be rent restricted if the project is a scattered site, with the exception of force of manager units. With the increase in scattered site projects over the past several years, we wanted to ensure that applicants are fully aware of this federal requirement, and it wasn't specifically stated in our regulations, so we're going to put that in there. Also, we are -- TCAC is proposing to eliminate the requirement that the applicant statement be notarized. This change allows TCAC's program to conform with the SIDLAC application statement format, which is not required to be notarized. Since many of our applications are now joint applications with SIDLAC, we wanted to make this formally in our regulations, but we are also eliminating the notary requirement for 9% projects as well as for all projects, and we just don't find it necessary in -- of that change. Okay. So the next slide, continuing on some general application requirements. This proposed change removes the requirement that projects with redevelopment financing provide documentation of Department of Finance approval of the disposition of redevelopment assets and properties, and that any applicable transfer to the successor agencies. Based on application submissions over the past several years, this process appears to be completed, and RDA assets and properties are now held by successor agencies. In addition, SIDLAC has discontinued this practice, so this is another change where TCAC and SIDLAC are aligning their practice on what we require documentation. The next proposed change provides additional time for 4% non-competitive projects to obtain rental subsidy commitments. We are, TCAC staff is proposing that rental subsidies be committed within 180 days for these types of projects, to align with the 180-day readiness requirement for the new state tax credit for 4% new construction projects, and also do align with the head subsidy layer and review timing. Yes?
Can you use the mic, please?
When you refer to non-competitive, I know it's in TCAC regulations, so I ask who has nothing to do with SIDLAC. And so if somebody submitted a 4% application, SIDLAC became competitive in the future, would these regulations still say that it's a non-competitive TCAC now, the latter one's SIDLAC combination, or what would it like?
Yes, and I think 2020 is also an unusual year for this type of, for the new state credits, because we're specifically required to go through the non-competitive system. Now, if we, future years could be different, so we could end up admitting this language in future years if that changes as well. Does that help? And just to clarify, competitive applications must continue to have rental subsidies committed in the application, and that's consistent with the requirement of section 10325F8 that is published and deferred financing is committed, and also because the tiebreaker has to capitalize on differential calculations. So for competitive applications, the rental subsidies do need to be committed in the application. That's remaining the same. Okay. Next slide, continue some application requirements, slide number 14. And I'm going to go a little bit out of order just for flow here. And the second bullet of this slide, TCAC staff is proposing to eliminate the requirement for general partner and developer financial statements. Because the regulations don't include criteria for evaluating these financial statements, when our staff asks questions, and there's some back and forth with the developer, we're not always getting meaningful conclusions to those interactions. TCAC staff also believes that the financial evaluation provided by lenders and investor and the bond issuer does provide similar financial scrutiny, and so that's, if that financial scrutiny isn't occurring in a project. We will continue to have experience requirements for general partners and developers as well, so we are looking at the capacity of general partners and developers in that way. Related, we're also proposing to eliminate the property management contract. Several years ago, TCAC removed the requirement that other development team members provide contracts, and so currently, the property management company is the only member that's required to include a contract. We do review the experience of a property management company in the application, and any changes to the property management company over the course of the development period and into the place and service application, we will review those and look at that property management experience, and so we feel like this is sufficient documentation verification. We're not going to require the contract anymore. So we satisfied the purpose. Okay. So going back to the first bullet on the slide, I'm going to talk about this bullet, and there's also a bullet related in the next slide, and I'm just going to combine that discussion. The proposed changes to sections 10325F3 and F8 clarify the requirement for 9% applications that substitution of funds is permitted only after a reservation of credit, it's not permitted during an application review, and that's for competitive applications. The proposed changes also clarify that substitution of AHP funds for either public or private financing is permitted after a reservation of credit. There's also some obsolete references to AHP in that section that are being removed. So we feel like applicants pretty much understand this requirement, but the language may be a little bit confusing, so we want to tighten it up a bit. And finally, the proposed change removes language requiring TCAC approval to increase or add funds to cover increased costs. Project costs have routinely increased recently over time from the original estimate in the application, and we have other mechanisms in place for TCAC staff to evaluate these, including the high-cost test and the final tiebreaker reevaluation during the place and service review. And we feel like that is a better way for us to spend our time than for, to have applicants in TCAC interacting about project cost increases, which we have become the norm recently. All right. So the next slide, I'm just going to cover the first bullet because I've just talked about the second bullet. So the minimum, this is related to the minimum construction standard for energy efficiency. This has two proposed changes. The first change updates the California Association of Building Energy Consultants, or PAYBAC certification, to the current year's certification, the most recent. And then the second change adds energy storage to the list of considerations provided to the development team by the energy consultant. On-site energy storage can provide cost savings in project operations, such as in the distribution of energy during peak hours. The building code, the new building code is starting to look at these sorts of things, and staff believes this is useful information for developers to consider, so we're proposing to add that to the list of items evaluated and modeled by the energy analysts for the minimum construction standards. Okay. So next, the last slide I'm going to cover has to do with housing type requirements, one for large family and one for senior. For the large family housing type requirement, TCAC staff is proposing to require specific play in recreational facilities for children ages 2 to 12 years only. So that requirement isn't changing. What we're doing is eliminating, we're proposing to eliminate the requirement for ages 13 through 17. In general, the 13 through 17-year age group does not often participate in active or outdoor recreational facilities, or at least that's our understanding, and developers have found this requirement challenging to implement and to demonstrate in the application. We did write the regulation language broadly to allow applicants to have a variety of options, but we're finding in the implementation of it that the proposed facilities for this age group are challenging for developers to come up with and for staff to evaluate in a competitive application. Examples of amenities that are likely to be valued by the 13 to 17-year age group include access to internet, computers, social services, and these, we do have as options in the site and service amenity point categories, so we're not eliminating that completely. There's just other areas of the application that can cover that. And for these reasons, staff is proposing to eliminate this requirement for the large family. The next proposed change clarifies for the senior housing type existing age requirements. The proposed language more clearly states that unless a project's federal funding source is designated for a senior housing development, and that federal program serves a different senior age group, the TCAC 62-year age requirement is required for those types of applications.
All right. Moving on. The next proposed change relates to average income test. So as you know, average income test was introduced, I think in 2018. It was a third federal set aside election. This basically allows a project to go up to 80% of average median income. In doing so, they have to still maintain an average affordability of 60% of average median income. When this was first introduced and we incorporated it into our regulations, we decided to restrict it even further than what the federal regulations required, and so we restrict it at 59% instead of 60, which is obviously only 1%. At the request of the stakeholders, TCAC now proposes to eliminate the 59 and just let the projects go up to 60% of average income. This will allow, you know, the implementation of the 500 million, especially with CalHFA's resources for their mixed-use program, which allows for a higher AMI targeting. So that would work well with those projects and allow a little bit more income for a All right. The next three slides are proposed changes to the developer fee. The first slide, slide 18, it clarifies that a project's high-cost test factor, so currently we incorporate that into the calculation of, to determine the maximum developer fee a project can receive. We are proposing to have this only incorporated in at the place and service stage, and the reason being is there's a lot of calculations relating to the calculation of that developer fee, and any change in the high-cost test has affected credit requests, and we're talking minor adjustments that have resulted in reduction to the credits, ultimately appeals and things of that nature. So we're going, we're proposing to just implement that at the place and service stage, which would still incentivize a developer to keep their costs down, because it can affect their developer fee. So if they can keep their high-cost test down, then essentially they can go get a higher developer fee. And it is specific to, you know, the base fee, which on a 9% new construction is 2.2 and then a rehab of 2 million, that number cannot increase, it's just more the incremental increase based on that high-cost test will increase. Yes, sir?
So ECD in some of their program requirements, you're keeping that high-cost test factor and developer fee contribution adjustment, and they lessen it by, dividing it by two rather than meaning it at the natural level that TCAC originally wrote. Did you guys entertain at all mirroring ECD by lessening the impact of the developer fee modification from high-cost to the maximum?
I don't think that, to my knowledge, I don't think, we haven't had that discussion, so we haven't thought about it.
It's been far. I mean, it's the first time we've heard of that. Yeah.
I mean, first time we've thought about it in that way. Historically, Mark was cyber moving first, because he would find that concept of --
Sure, sure.
-- basically multiplied by a factor to help motivate behavior. And then when Mark was at ECD, he said, I think it's too effective, you know, too punitive. So there's a --
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the question. Okay. Moving on. Through, as far as I remember, the developer fee number, the cost, has increased slightly for new construction from 2 million to 2.2. I don't remember what year that was, but it increased from 2 to 2.2 for new construction projects, and then in cost for rehab projects, it's 2 million. But the amount that you could include in basis has always been 1.4. And it was to kind of spread the credits so not too much basis, I guess, could be used that could be carried over, and, because since it was a 9%, and it is a scarce resource, that the credit could kind of spread a little bit further. In examining this, we feel like, you know, projects walk away from basis all the time, and so we thought allowing a project to utilize a higher basis figure by allowing them to include all of their base, all of the cost into basis, rather than this 1.4 figure, we thought that that was the best way to go. Yes, sir?
Question. Let's pretend my project applies, and, let's pretend these were for all enacted as preferred. And my project applies, I use the $2.2 million base, I don't do any high-cost test factor messing with it in the application, $2.2 million. Then at place and service, I show to be a good guy, and I go my project for 90% of the high-cost. And so the developer fee goes up to 2.3 instead of 2.2, whatever the judge wishes. Will the entire 2.3 million in this scenario be available for basis? The regs as proposed don't say 100% of the developer fee, but rather 2.2 million is the whole number.
Sure.
How do you control that? The whole amount, 2.2, or would you consider 100%?
I think we probably want to talk about it, but we could clarify that in response to comment, I guess, if you have a comment relating to that maybe. But I don't know, I think I would envision, I don't want to, I don't want to speak to that, but let us, let us take it as an advisement. You could put that in your comments. Okay. And then the other bulleted item on here has to do with project size limitation, which refers to incremental increases based on project size, which if we allow a project to go up to the full cost, this section ceases to be relevant, so we're proposing to remove Okay. Now, moving on to 4% projects. 4% projects currently have, we allow 15% of the basis to establish the maximum developer fee. In years past, we had 2.5, and when we ultimately opened it up to the 15%, we had a cap of 2.5 plus any additional, I guess, cost dependent on units. So for new construction projects that are, I guess, there's a 10,000 per unit increase, you can raise that cash-out figure based on that. And so what we're proposing is to raise the 2.5 figure to 3 million to allow for a little bit more developer fee for projects proposing, you know, because it was always, it was always larger projects were not getting the full benefit of the cost with that 2.5 cap when we first did that. So ultimately, this is just to give a little bit more developer fee for these projects. Okay. All right. The next slide has to do with basis limit increases. We have a limit for a portion, a subset of the basis limit increases that is 39%, and that includes prevailing wage, the daycare facility, and there's a handful of items. Currently, it equates to about 46% if you were to get every boost allowed. about 46% if you were to get every boost allowed. We feel that in most cases, you're not, 2% is you're not going to get because one of them's a special needs and one of them's a large family typically with the daycare center. So, we just felt the max of 39, we didn't see a purpose for having that cap. If a project's eligible for the boost, we thought we'll just go ahead and permit a project to take the boosts. Ultimately, the most you could get is 46%, and what the cap is is 39%. So, it just allow a project to access more basis and more credits. So, and it actually, I guess, would help in the high-cost tests for those projects that are having trouble meeting that. Okay, the next change, I guess, it's just a piggyback off of what Gina mentioned already with the other energy efficiency standards. We're just staying updated on that stuff and then removing the software that's no longer used by the Energy Commission. So, that's what that changes. Any questions? All right, so, the last two changes, the first one being parking requirements. Originally, we implemented this parking requirement to, I guess, prevent excess parking at projects. But, we're seeing so many projects that walk away from basis, so we figure, okay, by having projects exclude this from basis, it's really just moving numbers at a certain, when you really think about it. So, we felt that removing this requirement, it wasn't serving its purpose in our opinion. So, we'll go ahead and propose to remove that requirement.
It was also causing a lot of application errors, which we thought were unnecessary and disruptive in the competitive process.
Again, resulting in small credit reductions that were resulting in appeals that were over, like I said, a small credit reduction. So, okay, the last change has to do with the 15-year cash flow maximum and minimum limits and minimums, I guess. So, those, we review at different stages of the application. So, we review it at the initial stage, the readiness, subsidy layering, and at place-in-service. And our experience has been that at the place-in-service stage, a project has already been operating for at least a year, and they have actual numbers, okay? And we don't require that actual numbers be submitted. So, when a project doesn't, fails to meet, say, a cash flow requirement, we inform them of that, and they revise their figures and ultimately submit it, and we just feel fixing numbers that aren't real, I guess, based on the fact that they're not the actual figures, we just felt like it was an unnecessary exercise, and that's why we're proposing to remove that at place-in-service.
So, thank you.
So, before we
Open it up to public comments, let me just say a few things. Obviously, many of these changes were with the eye to streamlining the process and getting projects through our system more quickly and getting more housing staff online. I know that many of you participated in the treasurer's tour and comments period for that. This set of regs is not meant to accommodate all of the comments that need to be dealt. This is an initial set of regs, technical changes that can be made quickly, and we will, we are still considering all of that information and working our way to solve those problems. And I say that as a preface because what we're asking for today are comments on these regs because there are clearly also some issues pertaining to how the, that are too broad for reform. We will run out of time.
But I do want your comments and thoughts on those things. So, we will, I'm sure, I'm sure we've always made ourselves available, but that's my policy, that we will make ourselves available to discuss those types of issues in the future, by email, on the phone, in person, whatever is required. So, with that, please, can we have your comments on these regs?
Sure, sure, sure. Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, ultimately, I mean, we probably could have clarified, you guys asked questions, because we're only recording the comments for the record. We have a transcriber over here who's going to actually have you guys come up here and have, if you have anything you want for the record, you can come up here and speak. As far as questions, maybe we can take questions first, I guess.
In AB 101, referenced in new credit calculation for rehabilitation projects with extremely restricted regimentary agreements and the appraised values make it difficult to rehabilitate. And the AB 101, intended to help the safety code to say if you qualify with A to D, you can get these credits.
Sure.
What else do you want to apply for the projects? Do they apply in general, SIDLAC rounds, the 4% credit under rehab, or do they apply to the 4% credit? When do they apply?
It is part of the original 100 million, so you would apply during the competitive rounds, at least for now, unless we make any other changes. It would be to the normal 4% plus state.
I think that's where the placement of those, because by way of reference, right? They're in that, yes, correct.
So, they'll get linked in that process. And you guys didn't make any amendments to the, we're going to issue all the 4% plus state credits in the first round, and if there's any leftover sum in the second round, you're not changing that, right?
No.
The next question was AB 101 referenced up to 200 million, or the 500 million may be used with the mixed-income program from Cal HFA. Will those be set aside for it? Is it an allowance? How do you signify, I'm one of the people who wants to do MIP and the state credit, are you setting aside any credits for it?
I think when we update our application, we'll probably build in some selection, you know, option where the applicant would select what they're applying for, obviously. I guess it would just come in the normal pool. I don't know if you have any additional comments.
So, we are intending to set aside the 200 million. That's the intent right now. So, it's just a matter of tracking those projects.
Okay, so, for example, if in January, I assume January is when you're going to take applications for the 500 million.
No, we're going to start taking applications in November, and we did put that on our website.
Notation for today's
Livestream.
So, everyone's kind of learning about it at the same time.
By November for potential January allocation of the 500 million?
Let me say that the reason we're doing that is because we want to get more housing online more quickly. So, we believe that getting that 500 million out of the door as fast as possible is the best thing in the industry. And so, if you can start looking at the application in November, we can
That's hard to work on you, of course, but thank you.
Sidlack will have multifamily allocation in January. Some years, they don't, but TCAC is planning on it. So, just stay tuned for more information. We'll be publishing what we have as soon as possible.
And if for any reasons
Couple of questions, please.
Hold on.
Can they hear from this mic? Oh, all right. All right.
But they probably, can they hear the audio?
Thank you.
I, Jerry Glasser from Jamboree House. So, a question. It sounds like there's a lot of discussion in the community about the potential of Sidlack being oversubscribed next year. I know they're out doing, conducting a demand survey right now, and, you know, you'll know more probably in a little while, but to the extent you allocate in, or you applications are submitted in November, you allocate in January. Sidlack historically doesn't have an allocation meeting in January, but potentially, they would. But, to the extent they become competitive, would you theoretically allocate the new state tax critic resources? How would you coordinate to the extent they became competitive and potentially change their rounds to reflect the fact that they had limited resources so that they could spread it out?
So, I'm going to speak to that. We work very closely with Sidlack, as you know. We're all under the treasurer branch. We're in the same building. We talk every day. So, the answer is, we will coordinate, but can I tell you exactly how, step by step? No, because everything's hypothetical right now. But, we will have some reasonable means of coordinating.
Well, there is a TCAC application department. If you have that submitted to Sidlack, you haven't submitted yet to Sidlack, you need to do it concurrent with. So, and then, there's this expectation that it would be at the next Sidlack meeting. So, I think the only issue would be if TCAC got so flooded with them in November that there wasn't enough bonds in March. And right now, if that's an unknown factor, and I think we are exploring ways that we are going to rank in how Sidlack will implement that. But, there is, we kind of expect a short time period. If we accept applications in November, we would expect that the developer would be committed to Sidlack immediately for the next Sidlack. Does that make sense? And kind of track us with your experiences?
Yeah. I guess the question is, though, if you, because nobody knows how many applications are coming in.
Right.
So, and
Very good. It's for the same reason, yeah.
To the extent that you do receive, you know, a huge volume of applications, how do you, how do you plan? Your staffing is fixed. How do you plan to move those through the pipeline?
Okay, that's a good question. Our staffing is not fixed. We have actually appealed to budget for more positions. So, we are anticipating this, and we are getting support throughout the system for this initiative. So, I think we're going to have it covered. You know, now, I may change.
May hear me saying months from now, we will be
More people, blah, 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 blah.
But at this point, I can definitely stop it.
So, the idea of 100 applications came in in November, that you would process 100 applications in 60 days?
Well, you know what?
Inside our information.
We will strive to do that. And obviously, I'm the only one smiling when I say it because these guys are going to do it, right? So, I'm putting them on the spot.
Where's the TCAC staff back there?
We will strive, I will, we will, no. No, no, no. Truthfully, truth be told, that is the reason that I said, "Let's start in November," so that we have more, so that we have
More time, more months to focus on higher levels rather than
Waiting till March or something like that.
TCAC may be in better shape than Sidlack. And I don't know if it's generally known, but for the October round, we receive probably more than we've ever received, at least that we remember. So, we're starting to feel the pain already, and we're adjusting to that. So, it's helping us look forward a little bit to what we might possibly do if we get even more, which we definitely thought of.
Additional question. The November round is kind of short notice. I think everybody was potentially planning on a January application for the March allocation. But, you know, let's say that you receive however many billion dollars of applications in November, and you work through a significant amount of money. It sounds like 200 million is set aside for Cal HFA, and so, they're earmarked. And if there were over-the-counter applications that were in excess of the 300 million, it sounds like they would be, the Cal HFA applications are going to take precedent over other applications. And I guess, how, it makes sense if you check MIT program that you would go to the top of the list, but to the extent you're oversubscribed on the rest of the allocation, how do you make a decision about, and everybody's in one round. I mean, are you going to date stamp the applications, and are people going to, is that, is that the cue? How, in a situation where there's an oversubscribed round and you're holding, say, 200 million for the MIT projects, how do you decide who moves forward and who does not?
So, yes, we're going to date stamp. And we are, we are working
So, are you going to get your application in as early as possible?
I mean, let me look at my staff. Am I speaking out of
We're talking to Sidlack and we're talking to Cal HFA, and I think we, at this point, we don't know what the demand is going to be. So, we could potentially adjust things over the course of the year. If, I think initially, we weren't sure there wouldn't be enough demand. The more we hear about it, we think there will be enough demand. And now, we're looking at the bond allocation. It is very fluid right now, so we're trying to talk to our partners and come up with something that we can let people know about for the year.
Well, we do anticipate September, December, and there will Have to be some plan to the extent you're oversubscribed with how you determine who goes forward.
So, for oversubscription has only been, the discussion about oversubscription has only been really being actively discussed in the past week or so. We have not, I mean, as we reached out to the housing community to get a sense, it's only
It's only been in the past week or so. We started hearing kinds of funding.
So, we're really just considering
And we're working with the fact that it's 101, that 2020, you state tax spending, so you have to follow that. So, it's going to require some thought. So, we don't have an answer, but we are We are very, we've been getting a lot of calls.
Right, exactly what you're saying.
I think every For a billion dollars of resources for, you know, 200 million. So, anyways, there's, there are a lot of projects that are floating around. That's helpful. I think any clarity that you can provide to the development community, I think that the fact that this is, most people are used to there being, you know, credit limits in geographical areas. I think this is, this program is just completely new. It's very welcome from the development community, but everybody wants to make sure they can try to, they can access it, you know, to the maximum extent feasible. I have a couple other ED questions for you, and it goes back to the provisions that Will was speaking of with the rehab projects that qualify as, you know, low-income housing projects, extremely low income. Two of the criteria to qualify is that you have insufficient credits under the current program to complete substantial renovation and you have low appraised value. I thought that there might be the potential for TCAC to define low appraised value. I didn't see any definition. And so, I guess I'm seeking clarification on what low appraised value means. Is it a
We have a provision already in the regulations that has the, your student debt is higher than your appraised value. That's one avenue that you, that it would qualify. That's the one that I was thinking of. Beyond that, we haven't specified, but we can work on that. We need to do the final proposed.
I have a comment on the low appraised values replacement cost. If the replacement cost value of a property is above what the market capitalized value is, that's just another way that you can get to the same issue.
That would help.
The other question I had was the definition of substantial renovation. The TCAC regs references the code. There is a definition for substantial renovation in the TCAC regs right now, but I was wondering if that, if substantial renovation was consistent.
I would use this one in the TCAC regulations. So, 4%, you're going to say 15,000 per unit?
Is it Substantial is 20.
Yeah, I think it's more. Because I think the 15 is for that.
Yeah. Whatever the regulations
Whatever the
4% projects, 99% projects, those are the per unit. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. Wait, wait, wait. Let's, I mean
He was kind of
I know. We'll let, we'll let you come back up. I mean, I just
And I'm just curious, again, on this question about if the credits are oversubscribed. And you've come up with some way to differentiate if everybody comes in and is date stamped on the same day. Will we have an opportunity to comment on whatever that system is? I think it's at the forefront of a lot of people's minds.
Sure, you always have, you, we're always open for comments.
Yep.
We are open for comments. So, yeah. Okay. Let it, let it up here, but I mean, you know.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Terina White of the California Housing Consortium. I just wanted to follow up on Will and Jerry's question related to the set aside for the mixed income program. This last round, first round of the MIP program, they funded 10 projects. And so, I guess my question is, let's say, if those 10 come in requesting a state credit, would the balance of the 200 then roll over into the general pool? Or would you be holding that 200 million in the event that Cal HFA does another MIP allocation or application period in the next couple, you know, early next year?
I want to say, the language say up to 200?
Yeah, it's up to 200.
It says up to 200.
Right. I don't think we would just take one round and then disregard the 200 million. I think, we're, we're talking to Cal HFA, so I think we'd need clarification on when they would expect another round, whatever.
And to the earlier point of trying to get the credits out as fast as possible, I think we'd be in favor of if there isn't going to be a forthcoming round that's announced, right?
Right.
That we can anticipate to roll it in.
We would have to talk to Cal HFA about their calendar before we answer that.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
But, it's good to know the question. Thank you.
Okay, my last question is, does the 130% high test factor, the fact that you'll be rejected and you won't receive an application that's above 130% the threshold basis limit, that does not apply to 4% projects? Is that correct?
Correct.
It's only a 9% you can get rejected. But, a 4% project could feasibly be at the 135% of its threshold basis limit, and you would not reject that application. You're going to receive it.
No, for, for sure, non-competitive, we didn't. But, I think on the, I think under the original 70 million, we did. But, I'd have to check the language.
I, we may have built that in, in the last few years. If we did it in 10317, I think. I think we added-
So, 500 million.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think we would apply the 500 million. But, if you could follow up in an email with that question, then we can, we can make sure we give you the correct answer. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Do we have any on line?
Okay, well, we should take the questions before we take the comments.
Okay.
So, question one from George Lopez with the Peter Thomas Foundation. Question is, with the 500 million and additional state credits for 4% new construction rolling out in November, can TCAC swap out the 9% tax credits awarded in the recent 2019 Round Two with this 500 million in state tax credits? It will not benefit developers directly. However, it will allow TCAC to fund more projects in the 2019 Round Two, which is the ultimate goal, fund more projects.
Okay, any clarification on swap out?
With the 500 million in additional state tax credits for 4% new construction rolling out in November, can TCAC swap out the 9% tax credits awarded in the recent 2019 Round Two with this 500 million in state tax credits?
I think we need some clarity.
500 million is specifically for 4%. We cannot allocate it to 9%. It's just not clear if, if you're asking if we would make a change to the 9% allocation that we already did. But, for the, for the 500 million, we cannot allocate that to 9% credits. Hopefully, that answers the question. But, please follow up if it doesn't.
So, I apologize for this is a little bit late. Sarah Dobbs with AMP Cal Housing. She had a question on 10305H. Shall be awarded to applicants for eligible projects receiving an allocation of state ceiling from Sidlak. Question, does this language contemplate joint TCAC/Sidlak applications? Or are you requesting that projects have their Sidlak bond allocation in hand prior to applying to TCAC for the non-competitive state credits?
What section are they referring to?
10305H. And again, is this this language contemplating joint TCAC/Sidlak applications? Or are you requiring that projects have their Sidlak bond allocation in hand prior to applying to TCAC for non-competitive state credits?
We don't, I don't think we require them to have the bond allocation in hand. I think they compete, or they apply as they would in the other projects concurrently or prior to.
You would use the existing requirements in 10326 for non-competitive bond applications, those timing requirements.
I have a second question. 10317G2, proposed change number six. The project will, the project has or will have a current year's tax-exempt bond allocation. That is, state credits will not be available to projects that have already received a reservation of 4% credits in the previous year. Per question, will deals that apply to Sidlak for state ceiling by October 11th deadline through the December 11th allocation meeting be able to sep, to apply, will these applicants be able to apply separately to TCAC in January 2020 for March 2020 allocation of federal credits, non-competitive state credits? Or is that prohibited by this language?
So, they're applying to Sidlak early?
Yes.
Which, which section is she referring to?
10317G2, proposed change number six.
They have an application, do they need to pull that application and reapply in order to access the state credits if they, if that happens in November or January, whatever it is?
I don't believe so, but let us just verify that.
I think the regulation is, she got an old award of Sidlak. Don't just come asking for state credits now. She's more talking about a timing issue. I'm ready to apply to Sidlak today. May I do it? If I do it, are you going to consider me a last year? Right? She has a, she's talking about a timing issue.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the language doesn't envision this scenario, but if you apply to TCAC in November, you could trigger this. So, we could make a regulation.
To accommodate that.
We could, we're already in this section, so in our final proposal, we could clarify that. So, it's a really good question. Thank you.
Next question is from George Lopez again, Cesar Chavez Foundation. This is a hybrid question. In order to incentivize developers to use the complicated 4% 9% hybrid capital structure, would TCAC consider using the 4% project developer fee methodology instead of the 9% methodology for hybrid projects?
That's more of a comment, probably. I'm not sure we could answer that question.
Say.
Thank you. Thank you, George, for the question. I think it's outside of the scope of these reg changes, but we will take a look at it.
Laura Kobler from California Housing Partnership. Would one need to have an MIP award from Cal HFA before applying for state credits?
It's a requirement.
If, if the intention is to be in that 200 million, that's the way I think we're envisioning it right now.
Yeah. That'll be essentially their, I guess, ticket to apply, I guess.
Candace Hung from the Farming Grant Salazar. Can a project apply for Sidlak by October for the December allocation, assuming state credits then apply to TCAC for state credits in November?
I think that's a repetitive only under question.
Sharon? We have, we visit a reg, so accommodate that, so.
I just want to make sure that everybody's comments get on the-
No, no, no.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
That's all the questions.
All right. Let's open it up. Come at time.
And if you guys have a business card, if you guys can hand that to the transcriber, and she can, make sure she gets all the information correctly. You can just leave it.
Hi.
How are you? Good. Yeah, Beth Southhorn. I'm the executive director of Life Steps. I want to thank you guys for all the time and energy that you're spending to move through funding and push through new developments. It's very needed. And as a homeless advocate for over 30 years, something that's near and dear to my heart is the success of this program. Just something to think about in regards to social services. I know there's lots of back talk about the amenities being removed and not, for your reason of just staying on target. I'll, I'll speak specifically of how important it is to have the service provider as part of the application phase. It's a, an initial buy-in for the developer to feel as if this is a priority for them and their entire development team. We work with for-profit, nonprofit, not-for-pro, I mean, you, you name it, we work with all of them. We have about 34,000 homes we serve, 340 buildings throughout California, and we get all of the lens. And we're only a service provider, so there's no intention on anything other than doing meaningful quality services. What I hear a lot, and I sit on the Commission on Aging in El Dorado County, is a lot of promises that happen at application phase, but after several years, those promises aren't always fulfilled. Lots stops and starts of programming. A lot of that reason is because the developer finds a local nonprofit to provide services that are happy to provide those services, and that's great, as an example, an after-school program. But, there's no sustainable mechanism for funding for that after-school program, so they don't continue the program. And when that happens, there's no connection or liaison in communication with your auditing team. I am obviously a service provider, but I'm really about doing this right with integrity and making sure that we change the lives in poverty so that they're not impoverished forever. And with the right backing that your regulations offer us, it allows us to completely transform lives as we speak. So, I also have a lot of experiences. I've been doing this for 18 years. And 18 years ago, there wasn't a service requirement. There was a lot of bickering between the different partners, for-profit or nonprofit, fighting about wanting to be responsible for services and not wanting to be responsible. Lots of justification on why not to be responsible, because they sent bankers out and nobody came to the community for financial education. When you have meaningful service providers that are specifically designed and targeted for the higher complex, you have somebody willing to change the program so that the needs are being met. Our financial education program is an example. It's a 94% success rate in preventing eviction with just $400 at the end of one year. One $400 impact, financial budgeting, that intervention changes the housing, in mobility issues. So, there are technical ways of doing it. Rather than saying it's not worth it, or not valuable, or not needed, your stand in, your both Sidlak as well as TCAC stand on, saying it's of meaningful importance pushes the management companies and the service providers to work collaboratively, because the developers from GetGo have inception. So, anything that you're going in that direction, we have a pretty extensive database that can really show the meaningful impact of not just how many resumes we did, but how many actually got jobs. I mean, we're, we're serious about this as a science, and we want to make sure that the industry is backed up to be able to do that as you move forward with the changes. Thank you.
My name is David Yarden with AMP Cal. First of all, our thanks to staff for their hard work and efforts in putting together these ground proposals for the 2010 regulations. Technical corrections are very welcome, so thank you. We wanted to make a couple of comments, particularly in regards to the new tax credits or the G1B tax credits under the RTC. And we've, we've heard, or I've heard earlier in the question and answer sessions and discussions of this already, but nevertheless, I want to just go ahead and make, and make the comments. We'll look into the, the recent information that TCAC released regarding the dates and so forth. So, first of all, coordination with Sidlak and the bond applications. There are some regulations that are still a bit confusing in light of the new tax credits. And as to whether TCAC expects applicants with the new credits to already have bond reservation, to apply simultaneously, or apply after the TCAC application for their bond reservation. And I'll reference the sections, Section 10305H and 10317G2, which states that the project will have a current year's tax-exempt bond allocation, but then says the state credits will not be available to projects that have already received a reservation of 4% credits in the previous year. So, I think that these sections need to be revisited, particularly in light of the new state tax credits, and make sure that they're operating correctly and meeting the intent of the committee. And secondly, on the logistics of allocating the new state credits, the E101 credits, there's been some discussion in this meeting today already on this topic. We wanted to comment that the statute, 12206G1B, which governs the allocation of new state tax credits for 2020, only imposes four requirements that the project, the new construction, and meet the basic thresholds in the Internal Revenue Code and the Sidlak and TCAC regulations can begin construction within 180 days and is subject to availability of funds. So, the questions that everyone has is how will those credits be allocated? What type of system or priority will be adopted? It appears based on the language of the statute that the only methodology, if you will, that would be legally permitted would be first come, first served, since no scoring system or competition is allowed for year 2020. With that in mind, we'd like to emphasize that it's very critical for the development community to understand how that process will be affected. For example, your date stamp or timestamp, or possibly will there be an applicant, application acceptance period that will begin on a certain date and end on a certain date, which I don't think we've had before 4% credits, or will they be accepted as soon as the new forms are published for 2020. So, those need to be addressed and clarified. And we'd also like to suggest that in light of the potential for oversubscription, that TCAC could provide vast notice of the, the credit estimates for the new state tax credits on a regular basis, so, so folks in the industry have a sense of how many credits are, are still available. of how many credits are, are still available, uh, after the first, uh, the first round. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, my name is Cara Brodehier. I don't have a card, so I'll spell my last name, just like court. Um, B-R-O-D-F-U-E-H-R-D-R. I'm a staff attorney at the National Housing Law Project, and I specialize in the long-term housing tax credit program. And I specialize more in the tenants' rights aspect. I basically spent all day, um, talking to legal services attorneys across the state and answering their questions regarding the program and, um, the interaction between the program and tenants' rights. And as you can imagine, there are, it's, it's kind of a difficult thing to advise because there's not a lot of answers. And one thing I, and I hope that you would indulge me a bit in getting slightly off-topic just because we really do not get the committees here very often, um, but I'm going to try and keep my comments pretty brief. But I did just want to talk about, um, the committees.
So before you give me the comments. So you don't think that I'm saying this regarding the substance of your comments? We do want to stay on topic with the, with the regs today.
Okay.
All right, so I.
I don't know what you have to say.
Yes, I wanted to tell you that before.
Okay, I'm going to do my best, but again, we just, we don't have the access to the committee that the developer community does, and so we don't really get a public opportunity to address the committee very often, so I'm going to do my best. Um, you know, I just wanted to talk very briefly about, um, the fact that the committee does have, um, an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and to prevent segregation of your properties, and California is really going through the process right now. Um, the state of, the HCD and folks are looking into that issue, and one of the biggest issues, um, causing the segregation of properties and, including Lytec, are the displacement of folks and, um, tenants that are being evicted. And I think it's something that needs to be more on the radar of TCAC. Um, I know that the message has been historically that you're, you know, you're building the housing, you're not, you know, meddling in the, the other tenant affairs, but I just don't think that that's, that's, that's actually your role. You know, you're a housing agency, and I think, you know, you need, I think TCAC needs to take more specific steps to address the needs of tenants and the properties. We're not just building the properties, there's hundreds of thousands of people living in the properties. And I know the IRS is also at a very hands-off approach, but many other states, in recognizing this, many other state housing finance agencies have taken very significant steps to address tenants' rights in the areas of admissions and the areas of evictions. And, you know, these are states like Alabama, Iowa, Idaho, and we're California, and we're supposed to be a progressive state, we're supposed to be a leader, we serve as a model, and it's surprising and upsetting to the tenants and these properties that TCAC has not taken more affirmative steps. Because you do have the authority to do so. We'll be submitting comments with some of those examples, but just, you know, a few are that many states require that properties give, um, the admissions policy to the state housing finance agency, um, so it's transparent, so tenants know what to expect, but also to ensure that, you know, they're, they're fulfilling their obligations under the Fair Housing Act. You know, there's a lot of, uh, regulations around good cause. People aren't even entitled to a specific notice, um, if they're evicted in a TCAC property, um, or a property funded by TCAC. And so I just think it's really important. Um, another issue that I've highlighted with some of you before is that compliance with the Violence Against Women Act is problematic in the state of California and Lytec properties. I wrote a letter a few months or a few weeks ago to, um, Mr. Zito and other folks regarding these issues. We're seeing survivors that are not getting emergency transfers, that are giving up, that are staying in really unsafe housing. We're seeing, you know, egregious violations of VAWA with folks that, you know, are being discriminated against because of their status. And, you know, TCAC has an obligation to ensure that your properties are complying, not just with the application process, but with their obligations under that law. And I'll, just to end, um, you know, I did have the opportunity to go to one of the, the tour, um, outreach sessions, and I was there with a bunch of tenants, um, but I was trying, we talked a bit about a prop, a few properties that were bought by a company called Reliant, um, and these are properties already occupied. They received allocations under the 4% tax credit for rehabilitation. And, um, in the Hayward property, for example, 52 out of the 68 folks in that building were displaced as a result of the conversion through the tax credit program. Um, we've been very disappointed in the action or inaction taken by TCAC. I don't, we've essentially been told that it's outside of your authority to, to deal with it, and I don't think that's an excuse, and frankly, I think it's a shameful response. I think TCAC does have a lot of control over what happens, and, you know, these tenants did not have to be displaced in the way they are, and you hold the purse strings, and you have requirements in your applications where, um, developers are supposed to contemplate these situations. And I'm talking to tenants every day. I was just at a city council meeting with these folks last night, and people, I'd say only about 10, 10 of the families in that entire property are still living there. And I was talking to many of the folks that were displaced, and some of them, their rent has tripled, some of them are homeless, some of them are sleeping on the floors of people's homes, and, you know, I've, I also have reached out and talked to several nonprofit mission-driven developers about this particular issue, and they have all told me examples of ways that this could be done right, where they didn't displace tenants, where they provided relocation assistance. And, you know, I think that this needs, I think that TCAC could do a better job of addressing these scenarios, and, you know, I, it's just not okay to use public funds to displace tenants.
I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off for, for two reasons.
Okay.
One is because I haven't had a chance to talk to you privately. Um, I understand that you indicate that you don't get a chance to talk to anyone, but I am available.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask you, for the sake of the whole group that's here on this specific topic, if I can just kind of put a pin in it here, and maybe you and I can talk after this meeting.
Sure. Can I just make a comment about the scheduling of the meeting, and then I'll be.
Yeah, and I know that a, a large group of people have indicated that they were unhappy that we had switched to a, um, video conference. So I want to say in advance that the reasoning for switching to a video conference was because we thought we would get to a broader group of people. Um, in the past, we have complaints that we didn't have enough meetings in the rural areas, we didn't have enough meetings in the urban areas, we didn't have enough meetings in the northern, didn't have enough meetings in the southern. So in response to that, we thought that we would be able to reach a wider group of people by doing this online. It's an experiment. If it doesn't work, we may have to go back to the old system, but I just wanted to let you know the place our hearts were in when we made this change.
And I have to, you know, I have to give you TCAC kudos in that you, and you've done a lot of work traveling around and talking to folks. It's not like you're not, you know, I think the effort was there. I think the concern that we have is that the meetings were scheduled, then they were canceled with less than 24 hours' notice. I, you know, work with a coalition of advocates across the state. We had 10 people lined up to go to the meeting in LA, including some residents. We had 25 people lined up to the, uh, meeting in Oakland. I, and I, you know, the reschedule of this meeting, I mean, it was a Friday afternoon for the following Wednesday. You know, it's my job to be here, but a lot of people, it's, they live in the property. So, you know, and there's, you know, obligations under state law regarding notice. I, I know that technically that wouldn't apply to this meeting, but the spirit of that law is to give people enough notice where they can participate and, you know. But we do appreciate your efforts with the online and hope you work out the kinks and, but I will reach out to you and would really welcome having a meeting to discuss these issues. So thank you for indulging me. I really appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Shreya Shah. I work with EH Housing. Um, I have a question about the definition.
Before you start, can I get a spell in my name, please?
It's long. I have a question about the definition of new construction under the current regs. Um, if a project is, uh, reconstructing of a property that is there now, we're tearing down most of it, building more than the number of units there are, would it qualify as new construction?
You're tearing down the whole property?
A large portion of the property.
Are we having what?
10% of the property.
We have to see the details.
Yeah, I, I, we prefer to see the details before we make that. But there is, there is some language in there that speaks to the new construction slash rehab projects, so if you want to refer to that first, and then we can, and then maybe send us a detail, we can look at it.
Online comments?
Um, we have one comment from Patiierno. The Highland Property Development. He actually has two comments, one on 10317G2. He says, "We support the proposal to limit applications for state credits to current year 2020 tax-exempt bond-allocated projects and not to projects that have already received a reservation of 4% credits in a previous year. Reason for support: Projects that have received an allocation of tax-exempt bonds and/or a reservation of credits in 2019. Receive such allocations based on the evidence feasibility of the transaction upon which SIBLAC and/or TCAC issued their allocations. The 2020 state tax credits are intended for new, new 2020 transactions as a means to increase production. Opposition to this proposal would likely seem self-serving, self-enrichment purposes." His second comment is section 10325F8E. "We support what we believe is the primary intent of TCAC to only allow substitution of funds after a reservation of tax credits on a like-for-like basis. However, we also believe it to be harmless to program participants to allow substitution of public funds for private funds. We do not believe a substitution of private funds for public funds should be permit, permitted as a competitive, as competitive tax credits are awarded largely based on a project's committed public funds. To permit a substitution of public funds for, to, sorry, I misread. To permit a substitution of private funds for public funds presents itself as an opportunity for a bait and switch by a project applicant who is simply referencing public funds at the application stage to win an award."
Could I get a spell in my name?
Um, Paul P-A-U-L Patiierno. Much more, thank you.
Hi, thanks so much, honey. Kingdom Development, and, uh, my overarching comment is the regulation proposals are well-thought-out, well-intentioned, and I'm super supportive of almost all of them in the form that you drafted. I will give you technical responses via email, so you don't need to write down anything I have to say here, uh, but I did want to overarching re-say, uh, reducing requirements in the application is just going to make it faster for staff to review and easier for the development community to review. We're going to get more housing done faster. Removal of certain requirements like the play facilities for 13 to 17. Um, I, I see that as you guys putting a lot of effort into streamlining. I know we care about the residents, we care about doing things well, um, but making the program easier to use is, is a laudable goal also. Uh, and I'm just a super appreciative of the removal of the requirement for CEQA and NEPA evidence in the application. Uh, we will get that evidence through the appropriate channels, and thank you for not being a second set of eyes on that. Some things I would like to comment on. Number one, the, uh, in my, in my brainstorming about these regulations prior to yours, I came across the Health and Safety Code, uh, which is amended by AB 101, and it has a prohibition in it for TCAC to make allocations based on a timestamp without first-ranking projects. So, uh, I, I'm happy to email that to you. I think I might have mentioned it to you a couple of weeks ago, Anthony, um, but there's a Health and Safety Code prohibition for you not to use a timestamp unless you've already ranked the projects and you want to use it as a tiebreaker. Um, so pay attention to that sentence and make sure you don't run afoul to it. Um, I'm going to make a recommendation. I think you have to have some kind of pre-written answer. If I'm oversubscribed, if I have 300 million available and I get apps for 320, you need to tell us what you're going to do, and I know you plan to do that. Uh, so I want to throw my idea in the hat for you. People want to keep it simple, uh, but AB 101 has references to increased production, it has references to cost containment, so I think you should utilize the simple scoring system of the lowest state credit request divided by the amount of units. Okay, you'll get that in writing from me, but if you're going to have to pick something and it has to be simple, you could do that. An alternative which I do not support, but I'll just throw it out there for you anyway, is you could do a lottery. That's not prohibited by the Health and Safety Code, I'm not a huge fan of lotteries, but if you really, really didn't want to rank anybody, you could use that method. Also, uh, cost containment, uh, the Health and Safety Code even references, you need to show cost containment rule changes if you want this money in the future. So I know it's not referring to today. I know it's not saying put regulations in for cost containment today. However, I strongly urge the committee to make sure that at a bare minimum, the high-cost test factor of 130% is applied to these applications for 500 million, right? The Health and Safety Code says you have to meet the minimum requirements of TCAC and SIBLAC, and if you change that minimum requirement to don't be above 130%, it will be the minimum, and then therefore people will have to comply with it. Uh, there is a worry that developers will say, "Oh, look, I have a project that just needs a million dollars and I'm good to go, but I can ask for 6 million in state credits. Why not ask for the whole 6? I'll build $5 million of contingency in for myself." And us developers, we don't give back money as contingency. Oh, I didn't need it? We find ways to spend it. So if you motivate us just a little with, "Hey, ask for less credits," or you say, "Hey, don't let your costs go above some number," motivate us a little to not waste the resource, I think it'll look better in the future when we're trying to get next year's allocation for this. Thanks so much for all your hard work. I'll give you, of course, all this stuff in writing, so appreciate what you're doing.
I thought I would wait until the end. Uh, my name is Patrick Sablehaus. I'm, uh, executive director of the California Council for Affordable Housing. Uh, kudos, Anthony, to you and Gina and, uh, all your staff for, uh, the changes that you're proposing in the regulations. Um, it, it, it always is a problem when you have a, a program that, that's around for 30 years, uh, the tendency is that we stack on and stack on and stack off, and we never, we never pull any paper out of the pile. And, uh, I think it's really, uh, very productive, the, the, the reduction, uh, effort, the reduction in paperwork here that, uh, that you're going through. The one substantive comment I would make, uh, following comments made earlier, uh, is you will recall in the, um, the Governor's Budget, uh, Trailer Bill initially, uh, he had said on the $500 million state credit that, that it would be first come, first served, and then there was a bit of discussion about that throughout the state, and the Governor revised his trailer bill and took that language out, which I think is indicative of his intent not to have first come, first served, that you would have some kind of a system of ranking and rating, uh, the projects, and I think that's, that's proven enough that, that is at least what the Governor and the Legislature agreed to in the end when, uh, the trailer bills finally came out for implementing, uh, all of the new monies in the, in the program. So I, I wanted to make that clear. I don't think there will be a date stamp, uh, as the, as the first tiebreaker. You've got to do, uh, you've got to do what you've been doing in terms of rating and ranking in some form or another. So again, congratulations and thank you. Uh, we look forward to, uh, to more of this, uh, in terms of revising, uh, looking hard at the rest of the regulations when, uh, when time is available to do that. Thank you very much.
Uh, good afternoon again. Marina Reliant with the California Housing Consortium, and I just wanted to leave you with two kind of overarching comments. Um, we too, like Will and Pat, would echo that we do not think that AB 101 precludes there from being a prioritization of projects within the event that, that the state credit is ever subscribed. And we had a pretty robust conversation amongst both our for-profit and nonprofit developer members, um, earlier this week. Um, and I also believe that a, that a, um, credit request over units or bedrooms would be a good way to kind of ensure that people are, um, requesting as little as they need and increase the amount of units, as well as some kind of geographic distribution, um, perhaps similar to the MHP program where there's like a northern, southern, and eastern, so that when we go back, we were co-sponsors of legislation to increase the state credit the last four years. This year, AB 10, uh, most recently was amended to make this particular credit permanent. Um, so we look, we will be going back to the Legislature in subsequent years. Um, the, the more units we can show that were produced and the breadth of, of units throughout the state, the more successful I think we'll be at. the more successful I think we'll be at trying to make this a permanent allocation as opposed to sort of a con appropriation of the legislature. So that was number one. And number two, appreciate, generally, we'll provide more specific comments about the additional components of the regs, but related to the energy efficiency modifications, I think it's item 15. We understand that this makes sense to be updating it to the 2019. Why you are proposing to update it to the 2019, we strongly believe that with the 2019 update to Title 24, the state has the most rigorous sustainability requirements in new construction, and would really urge the committee to consider not requiring developers to be going beyond this rigorous requirement. I think it's a different discussion about the, what is an appropriate sustainability competition for rehab buildings, but for the new construction, meeting Title 24 already goes above and beyond what most states in the country are doing. Thank you. Are you going to echo me?
See any other comments? So I would say, thank you very much. And we appreciate your participation. We really appreciate your heartfelt comments. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.